Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law. In hearing place, all agenda items on the table for discussion minus item 9H. What's the wish of the council?
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes. Special work session meeting of April 15th, 2019, and the regular meeting of April 15th, 2019. Approve. What's the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Canofla, second by Councilmember Storey. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the bills. Checks 100454 through 100542 totaling $242,412.45. Approve. What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. Proclamations. Mayor Zilka, Firefighter Appreciation Week, May 5th, 2019.
Whereas the term firefighter describes a rescuer intensively training in firefighting, primarily to extinguish hazardous fires that threaten life, property, and the environment, as well as to rescue people and animals from dangerous situations, and whereas the men and women of our nation's firefighting organizations wear their uniforms with honor, dedication, and integrity as they protect their communities, and whereas firefighters follow a long line of tradition and honor that inspires them to help at a moment's notice, they are quick to respond to uncertain situations, mitigate danger, and combat the threat of destructive fire in order to protect individuals, families, and the economic being of our community. And whereas International Firefighters Day is observed each year to honor and remember past firefighters who have lost their lives while serving their communities, to express gratitude to those that have served in this line of work, and to show support and appreciation for those who presently serve, and whereas in 2018, there were approximately 1,216,600 firefighters serving 27,228 fire departments nationwide and responding to emergencies from 58,150 fire stations. Of those firefighters, 31% or 346,150 were career fighters, and 69% or 788,250 were volunteers. Now, therefore, be it known to all that I, Gregory J. Zilka, Mayor of the City of Little Falls, Morrison County, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th, 2019 as Firefighter Appreciation Week, and clearly state and underscore our support of all firefighters throughout the United States, but especially our Little Falls Fire Department firefighters, and be it further known that I believe firefighters handle their duties with the utmost in professionalism, and we have full faith and confidence in these brave men and women to serve and protect our community. And be it further known that I further call upon all citizens to take the time to show their support for all firefighters dated this sixth day of May, 2019.
Thank you.
Chief, if you want to bring them all up here, I'll present.
I'd just like to say a few words, too. You know, I thank you very much. It's a great honor to get this. I don't know if we've ever had this before, but these guys here and the guys that cannot make it tonight, they're the ones that make me look good. So I just want to thank you personally, too. You guys are an awesome group, and, you know, I can't say enough about you. So a lot of dedication goes into what you do, and keep up the good work. Everybody.
Congratulations.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you, sir.
I guess if we had more time.
If you could introduce yourselves.
You know, you guys, if you just introduce yourselves and your years of service, face whatever, wherever you wanted to. Simon Key.
Keith Sherman, 14 years of service.
Brandon Funer, roughly five years of service.
Cliff Doucette, 11 years of service.
I'm a guess, and my fourth year of service.
Bill Strong, 13 years.
Dustin Lucas-Avitz, four years.
Jeffrey Stumpf, 14 years.
Wayne Doble, 24 years.
Alan Saba's going on 30.
I've heard, 11 years of service.
And Jamie Serre, four years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Police Appreciation Week, May 12th, 2019. Mayor Zilka.
Whereas President John F. Kennedy stated in his proclamation 3537, "From the beginning of this nation, law enforcement officers have played an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms which are guaranteed by the Constitution and in protecting the lives and property of our citizens." And whereas it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers, and for the contributions they have made to the security and well-being of all of our people, and whereas there are approximately 700,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including 18 sworn members of the City of Little Falls Police Department, who work devotedly and selfish or selflessly on behalf of the citizens of Little Falls regardless of the peril or hazard to themselves. And whereas President Barack Obama stated in his proclamation of May 13th, 2016, "In moments of danger and desperation, the first people we turn to are law enforcement officers." These often unsung heroes risk their lives and sacrifice precious time with loved ones so their fellow Americans can live in peace and security. But more than that, they are leaders in their communities, serving as mentors, coaches, friends, and neighbors, working tirelessly each day to ensure that the people they serve have the opportunities that should be afforded to all Americans. In honor of all they do, we must give these dedicated professionals the support and appreciation they deserve. Now, therefore, be it known to all that I, Gregory J. Zilka, Mayor of Little Falls, or Mayor of City of Little Falls, Morrison County, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th, 2019, as Police Officers Week, and May 15th, 2019, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Little Falls, and clearly state and underscore my support of all law enforcement officers throughout the United States, but especially our Little Falls Police Department police officers. And be it further known that I further call upon all citizens to take the time to show their support of all police officers dated this day, sixth day of May, 2019.
Thank you.
Chief, if you want to bring them all up here, I'll present.
I'd just like to say a few words, too. You know, I thank you very much. It's a great honor to get this. I don't know if we've ever had this before, but these guys here and the guys that cannot make it tonight, they're the ones that make me look good. So I just want to thank you personally, too. You guys are an awesome group, and, you know, I can't say enough about you. So a lot of dedication goes into what you do, and keep up the good work. Everybody.
Everybody.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I guess if we had more time. If you could introduce yourselves.
You know, you guys, if you just introduce yourselves and your years of service, face whatever, wherever you wanted to. Simon Key.
Keith Sherman, 14 years of service.
Brandon Funer, roughly five years of service.
Cliff Doucette, 11 years of service.
I'm a guess, and my fourth year of service.
Bill Strong, 13 years.
Dustin Lucas-Avitz, four years.
Jeffrey Stumpf, 14 years.
Wayne Doble, 24 years.
Alan Saba's going on 30.
I've heard, 11 years of service.
And Jamie Serre, four years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Police Appreciation Week, May 12th, 2019. Mayor Zilka.
Whereas President John F. Kennedy stated in his proclamation 3537, "From the beginning of this nation, law enforcement officers have played an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms which are guaranteed by the Constitution and in protecting the lives and property of our citizens." And whereas it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers, and for the contributions they have made to the security and well-being of all of our people, and whereas there are approximately 700,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including 18 sworn members of the City of Little Falls Police Department, who work devotedly and selfish or selflessly on behalf of the citizens of Little Falls regardless of the peril or hazard to themselves. And whereas President Barack Obama stated in his proclamation of May 13th, 2016, "In moments of danger and desperation, the first people we turn to are law enforcement officers." These often unsung heroes risk their lives and sacrifice precious time with loved ones so their fellow Americans can live in peace and security. But more than that, they are leaders in their communities, serving as mentors, coaches, friends, and neighbors, working tirelessly each day to ensure that the people they serve have the opportunities that should be afforded to all Americans. In honor of all they do, we must give these dedicated professionals the support and appreciation they deserve. Now, therefore, be it known to all that I, Gregory J. Zilka, Mayor of Little Falls, or Mayor of City of Little Falls, Morrison County, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th, 2019, as Police Officers Week, and May 15th, 2019, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Little Falls, and clearly state and underscore my support of all law enforcement officers throughout the United States, but especially our Little Falls Police Department police officers. And be it further known that I further call upon all citizens to take the time to show their support of all police officers dated this day, sixth day of May, 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Mayor, if you want me to have one? Thank you, sir.
Drop one out for Laurie, if you would.
Thank you.
This is the police one. That's yours.
Award, Transportation Alternative Grant Award. Bike and pedestrian safety improvement project, receive. Greg.
Yeah, pleased to announce that the Transportation Alternative Grant that we applied for back in, back in January of 2019, we were awarded that project. It's $520,000 in grant funds that will be used for three pedestrian beacons along 27, one at, by Lindbergh School, one by Lincoln School, and one by Mary of Laura's Middle School, as well as sidewalk on 9th Street Northeast for about three blocks, and then a trail along Pine Avenue. So we applied for that in January. We, part of District 3, had a number of other folks that we were competing against, and we were able to secure those funds for the city. So I'm pleased to announce that we were awarded that.
Mr. President, if I could briefly add that Greg and I are on the Transportation Advisory Committee.
Correct.
And Greg submitted the request, and it was pretty amazing how those people worked together with all the engineers from different counties and cities, because there's a couple of them that somewhat withdrew their proposals because of the, you know, they had one that they didn't need done right away, and it was just shifting around, and the support shown by that entire committee was amazing. I've never seen any people work together on something like that where they're willing to step aside so somebody else could do something that they deemed maybe a little bit more important at that time, so.
Yeah, it's a fun committee to be on.
Free doughnuts, too. What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we receive and accept the Transportation Alternatives Grant Award.
Second. Let's just receiving it. Do we need to vote, or just have to receive? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda. Animal control report, April 2019, receive. Establish, pay, and appoint returning golf employees, approve. Parade permit, Little Falls Dam Festival Organization, June 15, 2019, approve. Sale of fireworks, permanent structure license, Walmart 1634, approve. Utility bill, insert Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau, big dig events, approve. Water reports, March and April 2019, receive. Zoning administrator report, planning commission, April 2019, receive. What is the wish of the council?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion?
They're changing the route of the parade. The Dam Festival Parade?
Yes, yeah, because of construction on Trunk Highway 27.
And it's going down Sixth Street?
Sixth Street, correct.
That'll be different.
Yep.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearing and lettings, letting materials testing, Independent Testing Technology Incorporated, Public Improvement 375. Greg.
Yeah, we requested proposals from materials testing firms, both Ron Intertech and ITT or Independent Testing Technologies, to do materials testing on specifically the Trunk Highway 27 project. As part of our portion of the work, we're responsible for ensuring that the trenches are backfilled and compacted properly, as well as the material that's brought in for the aggregate base for the subgrade and such. And so we reached out to these two companies for proposals, and staff reviewed those, and we are recommending ITT or Independent Testing Technologies out of Wade Park to be awarded the project and to be charged to the Public Improvement 375.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to award the materials testing to the Independent Testing Technologies Incorporated.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Canofla. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Old business. Ordinance number 15, 7th series, authorize and direct sale of property, ABS Properties LLC, introduced for 15.
So this ordinance would provide for the sale of property to ABS Properties. We did have a public hearing on this earlier for the tax increment financing. They are intending to build another facility or another building to house a second business that they purchased, and this would be adjacent to the lots that they currently own.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to adopt ordinance number 15, 7th series.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion?
I was reading through, and I noticed that the contractor is ABS, and the less C is also ABS, so they're leasing it from themselves? And that's very typical, where they have a holding company for the property, and then the business is another company. So ABS Properties is buying the, the property. Okay.
Ordinance call a roll, please.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Carries.
Amended memorandum, amended memorandums of understanding, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council number 65. John.
Thank you, Council President. This is a revision to the memorandums of understanding that were passed in February of this year. Based on getting our attorneys to find mutually agreeable language, we, there was an item that cleared a question of clarity, and that was stricken. The intent of the memorandums is significantly the same as what was passed. I just wanted to make sure that the memos were clear and acceptable by all parties. They have been signed by the unions and the stewards for Afsmi, as well as the next one for Local 49.
Do we need to approve B1 and B2 separately, or can they be approved together?
You could approve them together unless there was objection.
I'd have to abstain to both of them, then, instead of just one of them, but I'm fine with that.
What is the wish of the council?
I make a motion to accept amended memorandums of understanding for the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Storey, to approve items 1 and 2. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
All abstain, Mr. President.
Thank you. Amended memorandum of understanding, International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 49, temporary change in job duties, approve. John.
Again, very similar to the previous two. Clarity of the memos for, based on language from the attorneys, again, materially the same as what we approved earlier.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Canofla, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. New business. Item A, ordinance number 16, 7th series, authorize and direct sale of certain property to Morrison County, introduce. John.
Thank you, Council President. This is to authorize the exchange of the county, property with the county. This is in the area across from the County Public Works Building on the west side. This is the police shed that they, the storage shed that they have out there. The Sheriff's Department is seeking proposals to build a new facility. We, in exchange for their shed, which will move and hopefully be able to reuse on a portion of the property, we're basically land swapping a piece of property that we have with them in order to acquire the shed and accept a piece of property that they have.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 16.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, forgot. Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Storey.
Introduction only.
Yeah. Recommendation of interview committee, establish the part-time patrol officer hiring eligibility list, and authorize appointment hiring of Axel Lang. Accept an appointment, police chief.
Mr. President, member of the council. Police officer testing and interviews are conducted on Thursday, April 25th, to establish a hiring eligibility list. Six candidates participated in the process. Three progressed to the interview, and Mayor Zilka, police chief Eric Kenniken from Peers, Officer Josh Burgart, and Sergeant Craig Sealan sat on the interview panel. Three candidates, the three candidates that interviewed did well, we ranked those. I spoke with the first candidate, and he declined to accept the position at this time. So at this time, I'd request that Axel Lang be hired as a part-time officer. He is interested. I spoke with him, and he is interested in the position. He would be a good addition to the department. I think some of you may know him. He works part-time for the Sheriff's Office right now, and he's a really a good, solid person, so. Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments on the process?
Yeah, thank you. I would just say that Mr. Lang did a great job in the interview process, seemed passionate, and like that was a career that he wanted to do. He was very forthright and honest, and I think he'll be a great addition to the staff.
Good. Thank you.
I've known Mr. Lang for many, many, many years, and he's a very good person. He's, he'll work hard. He's committed. I'd highly recommend him myself.
Good. What is the wish of the council?
Motion to accept and appoint part-time officer Alex Lang.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Mayor Zilka. Authorized appointment hiring of Axel Lang. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Recommendation of interview committee, Guy Ephrimson and Stephen Hartzell, wastewater operations, accept, appoint. John.
Thank you, Council President. Last month, the interview team of myself, Matt Straight from the waste plant, and Dwayne Hynden from the water treatment plant, conducted interviews to hire for a position. Upon additional request to hire a second candidate out of that pool, we're pleased to bring forward Guy Ephrimson and Stephen Hartzell as our candidates. They have accepted the job offers. This will bring our existing wastewater staff up to capacity. Both are currently employed with wastewater treatment facilities in other cities, not, don't have high levels of experience directly in that field, but come with great experience and education and training in the industry, will be quick studies. In fact, Stephen even worked as an intern for us last year at the waste plant. So very excited to have both, both members joining our team and working with us as we move forward, especially with the project work that we have coming up.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I would like to move that we accept the recommendation of the interview committee and hire Guy Ephrimson and Stephen Hartzell.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Canofla. Any discussion?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Recommendation of joint airport zoning board, zoning ordinance amendment, accept, concur. Greg.
Last fall, the, last fall, the joint airport zoning board started to meet once again. It was in preparation of the proposed crosswind runway. The crosswind runway, we've been talking about this for probably 20-plus years now in regards to what we'd be looking at with that, with that proposed runway. What we're looking at, currently we have a grass runway. We're looking at twisting it counterclockwise about five degrees, so it's directly north and south. There's an exhibit on page 68 of your packet, if you want to, if you wanted to see it there. But in a nutshell, we held a public hearing on April 24th with the residents adjacent to the, to the, to the airport. It was well-attended. They had a lot of good questions for it, and just trying to find out what exactly this would mean for, for their particular property. At that time, the, the airport zoning board recommended approval of that ordinance to go to MINDOT for their review and approval. And so tonight, we are looking for concurrence from the city council, and we will, we will be looking for that same concurrence from the, from the county tomorrow. But tonight, we are looking for the council's concurrence of that so that we can move that forward.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to accept the recommendation from the joint airport zoning board.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Canofla, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion?
As President, I would just add that I attended that meeting, and the township supervisors were very supportive of the project. We had only one resident with what I would consider a major concern, and the rest of the residents, I think most of their concerns were satisfied by whether they were in Zone A or Zone B. There was some question, and it was verified that even though there was a Zone A and B there before, it just shifted a little bit.
Shifts, yes.
One direction. So I thought it was, like Greg said, it was very well-attended, and I think they all did a good job of presenting, so.
And that affects what, they could get a permit to put up or construct on their property.
In a nutshell, yes, it can. So single-family homes, you won't have an issue with that. In the Zone A, which is the red area, they, they limit the number of structures that you could put in there, but that really doesn't affect any properties over there. In the Zone B, which is the blue area, you could still put a single-family home in there, but it limits, you know, you can't have like a church or something like that where there's a large congregation of people, because that's the safety zone right at the end, both ends of the runway. And so that's, that's the reason for the zoning on it. And like Mayor Zilka mentioned, we currently already have one because there's a crosswind runway there. Now it's grassed, but it turns five degrees to the counterclockwise.
So the only thing that's changing is that little shift?
Yes.
Otherwise, the zone's already there?
The zone's already there, correct, correct. So it really takes it off of some of the parcels and moves it more onto the cemeteries that are on the north end. That's basically the shift to it.
Greg, would you also touch on the fact that we sent letters out, because there were some questions, well, how come we weren't notified, and they were, both zones received letters, correct?
Yep. So there were letters that were sent out to folks that were in Zone A, and letters that were sent out to folks in Zone B. A is the folks that are in the, in the red areas, and B is in the blue. So there was, I think, one parcel that received both of them, because there's a little sliver of his property that was both in A and B, and so he received both, both letters. But we did send letters out to everybody that was in those two, two zones that were affected. I think it was 26 and 19 parcels, respectively.
And other runways, so sort of the same zones that are already there?
The, the main runway, that's nothing changing with that one. Yep, that's already existing.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution 2016-36, Airport Maintenance and Operation Grant Contract, adopt. Laurie.
Yep, that should be resolution 2019-36.
Oh, sorry.
The resolution that you have before you would allow the city to enter
There was some question and, uh, it was verified that even though there was a zone A and B there before, it just shifted a little bit.
Shifts, yes.
Uh, one direction. So, I thought it was, like Greg said, it was very well-attended and, uh, I think, uh, they all did a good job of presenting, so, thank you.
That affects what, they could get a permit to put up or construct on their property?
In a nutshell, yes, it can. So, single-family homes, you won't have an issue with that. Um, in the zone A, which is the red area, they, they limit the, the number of structures that you could put in there, but that really doesn't affect, uh, any properties over there. In the zone B, which is the blue area, um, you could still put a single-family home in there, um, but it limits, you know, you can't have like a church or something like that where there's a, a, a large congregation of, of people, um, because that's the safety zone right at the end, nor both ends of the runway. And so, that's, that's the reason for the, uh, the zoning on it. And like Mayor Zilka mentioned, we currently already have one because there's a crosswind runway there now, it's, it's grassed, um, but it turns five degrees to the counterclockwise.
So, the only thing that's changing is that little shift?
Yes.
Otherwise, the zone's already there?
The zone's already there, correct, correct. So, it really takes it off of some of the parcels and moves it more onto the cemeteries that are on the north end, um, that's basically the shift to it.
Greg, would you also touch on, uh, the fact that we sent letters out, cause there were some questions, well, how come we weren't notified and they were, uh, both zones received letters, correct?
Yep. So, there were letters that were sent out to folks that were in zone A and letters that were sent out to folks in zone B. Uh, A is the folks that are in the, in the red areas and B is in the blue. So, there was, I think, one parcel that received both of them, uh, because there's a little sliver of his property that was both in A and B and so he received both, uh, both letters. But we did send letters out to everybody that was in those two, uh, two zones that were affected. I think it was twenty-six and nineteen parcels, uh, respectively.
And the other runway, so sort of the same zones that are already there?
The, the main runway, that's nothing changing with that one. Yep, that's already existing.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution twenty sixteen dash thirty-six, airport maintenance and operation grant contract. Adopt. Lori.
Yep, um, that should be resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-six.
Oh, sorry.
Um, the resolution that you have before you would allow the city to enter into an agreement for the operation and maintenance of the airport. The agreement runs from July of twenty nineteen through June of twenty twenty-one, so it's a two-year agreement. And the agreement applies, provides for the state to reimburse up to seventy-five percent of the cost to operate the airport each year to a maximum of thirty-two thousand seven forty-seven each year. So, if our expenses are more than that, then we pay for that, but the, um, state will reimburse us operating expenses up to the thirty-two thousand each year.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to adopt resolution two zero one nine dash three-six, airport maintenance, maintenance and operation grant contract.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion?
Um, I have one question. Do you know what the maintenance costs have been running on that property out there?
I don't recall right offhand, but, um, it's our maintenance that we pay the, um, airport manager to maintain and take care of the airport. Um, there's, they don't reimburse all the costs, but they reimburse majority of them, utilities, um, trying to think what else, supplies that we typically need, um, there's a few things that they don't reimburse for, but it's, it's again up to seventy-five percent of what our cost is.
Is this similar to what we have right now?
Correct. And it's a two-year agreement. We do this every two years.
Just continuing.
We've done this, it's, yeah, we've done this always.
Resolution, call or roll, please.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg? Yes. Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Conofla?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-seven, amend resolution twenty nineteen dash zero seven, order in public improvement three seventy-six, block twenty-two, Water Power Company Two. John.
Uh, thank you, Council President. We are amending our resolution for the, uh, public improvement project for this year. We had a portion of the project that we've determined, um, in the interest of all the other work that we have going on with this, with the other construction projects and the need to contract for additional services to, to meet those, uh, projects, we are, um, looking to remove a portion of that project and move it into a construction year in, in twenty twenty. Uh, this is the, the paved alleyway and, um, streets on the southwest side.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to accept resolution two zero one nine dash thirty-seven.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gushick, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion?
How is this, uh, John, how is this gonna affect, uh, um, uh, the cost to the residents over there as far as, um?
We, uh, looking at it and combining it with projects next year, uh, you know, part of the structure and strategy for doing it this year was that we could combine it with the larger skilled projects and, and use that through the four twenty-nine assessment process and recoup some of the costs there. Uh, likely we wouldn't, we won't be meeting that same threshold next year with the other projects that we look at combining it with, uh, but we do have, uh, public improvement, uh, revolving fund or repair funds that we, we have that we'd be, um, planning on, on incorporating into it. So, uh, in terms of the overall cost of what they projected, it's likely their, their contributions are gonna be reduced, uh, because we won't be able to assess back as much of those, of those costs. Um, but we would, we do have the means to, to finance this internally with funds that we, we, we collect.
So, the assessments to those individuals affected are gonna be basically, are you saying they're, that they look like they're gonna be less than what was projected?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
An ultimate impact should be a, a reduction in cost to those. The, the request for the paved alley, pardon me, um, paved alley still can be assessed, right? Because it's a petition?
Right, yeah.
Yes, so the alleyways, paving of the alleyways, we can still assess back, but the, the street portions, we would, we would be paying for most of that work.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the assessment rates be the same? We just can't bond for the project, right?
Yes, for it, we just can't.
Oh, correct. Sorry. So, I mean, potentially with the, with, with the cost, but we, we are gonna combine it with other work, so it isn't just isolated to two blocks and an alley. We'll work towards getting that, um, that project and, and planned out and, and developed so that it fits within our usual timeframes where we get the best, um, best, usually best bids from those projects. Yeah, we won't be able to bond through the four twenty-nine assessment process correction and we would be able to internally, um, use our city funds to, to make up the difference.
Resolution, call or roll, please.
Lundberg? Yes. Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Conofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-eight, authorize execution of development agreement, ABS Properties LLC. Adopt. Lori.
Resolution, um, before you tonight would allow us to enter into a development agreement with ABS Properties. Um, again, they will be purchasing a lot adjacent to property they currently own and they will be constructing another building on that for, um, their additional business that they purchased. So, um, this will allow the development agreement for the tax increment financing for reimbursement of a portion of their costs through the TIF.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to adopt resolution two zero one nine dash thirty-eight, authorize execution of development agreement.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Conofla. Any discussion? Resolution, call or roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Conofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
Wastewater Construction Improvement Project. John.
As we discussed in the work session, um, we have, uh, based on the circumstances that, that have occurred, we are interested in doing a request for proposal for the construction management services. Uh, these should be taken as two independent actions, um, but they, they are interconnected. So, the first is for the, uh, for an interim construction management agreement, um, and this is with Short Elliott Hendrickson, um, until the request for proposals are, are received and we can, um, process those and, and bring those forward to the council. So, the, this is necessary in order to get the project started and, and up and running. Um, the, the work that has been done so far has been on, on small portions that I've worked directly with, uh, with Colin Markison, uh, from SEH to, to keep the project at least on, somewhat on ta, on time. Um, it's very important that we, we get this project up and running because, uh, it is a very tight timeline for, despite the fact that it's gonna be a two-year construction, um, for this facility and we have some deadlines to meet, um, based on the MPCA. So, at this point, we are recommending, uh, an interim construction agreement with SEH.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I move we approve inter, interim construction management services with Short Elliott Hendrickson.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, sec, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item number two, request for proposal, construction man, management services. What is the wish of the council?
Council President, may I, uh, provide some comments to this? Uh, this is a request for proposal. This would handle the remaining portion of the construction management, um, for, for this project. Uh, the, you know, the project is set to, set to start, um, post the interim, uh, construction management. If there's a, if the firms that are, 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 we receive input back from, if, uh, the council chooses to accept from another, another firm, we can try to move seamlessly into, uh, bringing those on board. There are some considerations here where we, we wanted to make sure that, uh, experience was, was weighted heavily on, on a plant of this size and the nature of the construction that we, we have going on. Um, it's going to be a staggered process, so there's gonna be parts of the, parts of the construction that are gonna be taken offline, uh, to make room for, for new things going on. So, it really is, uh, important that we manage both tear down and build back and keep the, the plant operations going throughout the whole time. So, that was very important, um, and that we wanna look at and find in terms of, um, in terms of experiences and input from, from those, uh, presenters. Uh, other information that we really wanna see, um, is references that we have from, from other projects, uh, that have similar scope, uh, the, the fact, the individuals' resumes that we, that would be involved in this project. Fees are an important level of the service, but, um, but weighted, weighted at a lower amount. And then if, if in case that there is a, um, an extra, a different party that is working on this, um, typically our plan had, had been to, to be moving forward with SEH, uh, in terms of the, the design. Under the circumstances, we believe it's very important that we accept other proposals as well as SEH's in doing this, um, in doing this management for proposal.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion, request for proposal, construction management services.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Liljegren, second by Mayor Zilka. Discussion?
Mr. President, um, John, so, when you talk about the fees, um, I think I understand this correctly, uh, the request for proposal, we're not necessarily bound to the cost, only we could take into consideration continuity, experience and all those things that you...
Correct. This is a professional services agreement. It doesn't need to, we, we are not obligated to accepting the lowest cost, the responsible proposal. Um, we can pick and choose what, what we want, um, but in setting parameters and objectives, uh, objective measures on what we are going to look at and how we're gonna score them, um, we did wanna incorporate it as, as a potential, um, decision in, in how we wanted to review and, and bring forward, um, bring forward the, the recommendation to the council as we, as we receive them back. So, um, it is a tight window, um, but we are, which is kind of why we set the, the parameters of this RFP to be very broad. Um, you know, I, I, I believe, I know of numerous firms that are, that are interested that have been paying attention to the work that we have here, so there isn't, it isn't of, uh, lack of awareness of the, of this project. We've been on the PFA list, we've been on, we've been in front of the legislature both this year and last year in terms of advocating for this project, so it's something that within the industry people know is happening, um, and, and they know, uh, the construction group that we work with and they, um, so it, it's something that I, I feel that we are gonna get responses and we're gonna get fair responses, um, but in light of the circumstances that we've, um, recent experiences, I, I feel it's very important that we move forward and at least have a, have an open process, but do so in a manner that we can also keep it on time and on task. Um, and it's, it's not how we would, I believe that in the future, we will intend on moving forward, um, we will have a, a much longer, um, more, more developed, um, process around larger, larger professional service agreements that we have, similar to what we did with our, uh, attorney RFPs that we, we incorporated last year, but in light of everything that has been on our plate and in, in that, that we've had to face and, uh, the, uh, importance of keeping this project moving forward, um, I believe this is, this is the recommendation that, that best suits, uh, um, all those factors at this time.
Mr. President, so Rice Lake Construction hasn't been awarded this project?
Have been awarded this project. They've been identified, they, they're identified in the RFP for the, those engineering firms or the construction management firms to, that they are the ones working on this project. It's just a piece, valuable piece of information that they would wanna know.
So, Rice, Rice Lake is still gonna be doing the job?
They are absolutely still gonna be doing all the construction, but just like we talked about in the engineering services and the work that we do inspecting projects, we need to have, uh, people and people overseeing those contractors because we're not, we don't, we don't, as staff, the, the wastewater operators certainly as staff or even our engineering staff, we don't have the expertise to oversee those projects and make sure that everything is happening in the, in the...
For something as simple as, why are you putting that giant pipe there when it's supposed to be over here, right?
Yes. Or if something comes up to, um, we've run into something we didn't expect when we digging in, digging into the ground and we don't exactly know what's under there at all times, um, you know, who, how do we modify this decision and, and keep the project moving along until we can get, uh, approvals from the council and those that, those, uh, with authority? Yeah, there, it's, it's very important to, to have it, not just for keeping the contractors honest, but making sure that they have the information that they need to, to know, um, how to do their, their work and make a decision when, when something will change. I promise there will be changes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry?
Sorry. Mr. President, would it be possible to vote this down and then just go ahead with hiring SEH to do it since we already had this contract with them? I mean, is that an option or is that something that is really not recommended?
I...
As far as...
I think we're past that.
And Council President, I, I mean, based on the impact of, of last meeting, uh, and, and, and my discussion too with, with Greg and, and the, this is also to help, I mean, help him in this situation as well.
For Greg's protection.
It, I believe that, I think it looks, it certainly is important for the council to, to be making this consideration. I would absolutely expect SEH to be putting in a proposal on this. I think they are very interested in the, in maintaining this relationship and I would absolutely a hundred percent, um, review them and score them as objectively as I am any other firms that, that come forward. So, it, I, I fully expect that they're gonna be there, um, but in light of everything, I felt it's very important that we do open up this process.
Okay.
Some, somewhat understandably, we have some really tight timelines for, for doing this and some unique circumstances behind, um, the scope of this project as well.
Well, not only that, I think Greg's gonna be consumed with a lot of stuff going on downtown too.
Absolutely.
Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off before you could ask your question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Trunk Highway twenty-seven in Camperly Veteran State Trail, interim construction management services agreement, Bolton and Mink Incorporated. John.
Uh, thank you again. Uh, this is, as we discussed in the work session, the need for, uh, additional services on this project. They're gonna be working, uh, very, um, very long hours in, in multiple locations during certain periods of time scopes on this project. It's a, it's, it's pretty large, uh, in scope for what we typically do. Um, we did have, we did intend to have a plan of hopefully a, a, an additional city staff person onboard at this time, um, with the hiring process and other factors that, that came along, uh, we do not have that person in place, uh, to be, to be hired and we wouldn't have had that person in place and trained, um, and, and that we felt confident that we could have, we could have used them on this project. Uh, therefore, because in the nature of the, of the work and, and the partnerships that we have, um, with the state DNR and, um, MINDOT on those, these two related projects, um, that's why we've asked for additional support. In looking at the, the, in looking at the proposals that we received back and based on the, the two engineering, uh, assistants that we had, uh, in gathering their input, Greg was, uh, not a part of this discussion, um, we, we felt that the recommendation is with Bolton and Mink. I believe all three firms are, would have absolutely served us really well, um, based on the nature of the project and the stakeholders that are involved, uh, and the experiences that are, those staff had with, with these, uh, with that firm, uh, and the people that would be directly assisting us, um, we felt it's important that, that, or felt that we warranted, uh, the recommendation for Bolton and Mink.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the interim construction management services agreement with Bolton and Mink, Inc.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Starley. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. stopped on the freeway because traffic was so backed up on the bypass. They were just concerned about a busload of kids sitting in the freeway because the off-ramp was full. I don't know if they can add anymore.
I know in the rush hours, so morning as well as the afternoon, they do have a trooper that is over on, what is that street? Not Greyhound.
Riverwood?
No, not Riverwood. It's on the west side to get back across on the 213. So, they've been taking some steps to see how, how that works. Wherever they see bottlenecks, they've been, they've been addressing at that point in time. There's been a couple of other areas that I've reached out to them to take a look at as well, so.
This was traffic stopped on 10, though, and I think they were really concerned with the bus, and then with the coming weekend and nice weather and people heading north on Friday.
I will, I'll talk with them, but I know they're planning, well, they started it today in regards to that trooper.
Thank you.
So, they're looking at things.
Any announcements? We'll adjourn at 8:21.